Okay, then we'll open up the hearing for 118 Marion Road. Propose removal of trees on a scenic road. And so Betsy, Steve and I went on the sidewalk and we observed, I mean how we're going to describe this, two white pines that clearly looked like they were in distress.
Those are on-
On town property, right. And then there was a tree that was further along which was-
Further to the south, split-
That's right.
Right, exactly. And while we were on site, Kim, our consultant, came about and demonstrated that actually you could see through a crack in the tree. That is to say, a crack, you could see daylight from one side of the tree to the other. So-
So much around.
So this is-
This is the tree here, this crack.
That's right, exactly.
Yeah.
Did you talk to the tree warden?
I did talk with the tree warden and I thought he was going to join us. Basically, he is of the opinion-
This is the oak tree with the crack.
Okay, there's- originally, the application was for three trees, but it was determined that one of the trees was on the applicant's property. So the two trees in question, there's a large pine at the, where the driveway is, adjacent to the driveway, and then further south is this double-trunked oak tree with the split in it. So Tom Collins' comments to me were that the tree with the split trunk is, should be removed. And he, he didn't have a feeling either way of the pine. But, but felt that with the split and the damage to the oak, that, that the oak should be removed.
When I went by, the pine didn't look in that terrible shape, to my mind, but I didn't get out and sound it there.
Well, I think the issue is probably more that the pines behind it on their property have broken limbs, major broken limbs, and they're planning to remove those for obvious reasons, and if those are gone, then you almost have to take down the one left standing.
It's exposed, in other words-
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that.
The other thing that Kim brought up, which was an interesting concept, was some white oaks come down and taper at the bottom, and those are the ones that survived better. There were examples of that type, further along.
This does not-
This does not have a crack, so it's much more possible-
Here it is.
Right.
Sort of like monopole.
So they're planning on taking the two behind it down?
Right, on their property, yep. I think-
I don't know if those, if those photographs reflect one of the trees, one of the pines, the whole kind of, you go up like thirty feet and it's blown off.
Right, that's one of the ones behind it, exactly.
So was, was this property under site plan approval at one point, at some point in the past, or is this strictly under-
This is strictly under site plan.
And Kim also didn't point out that there's a lot of new trees growing underneath the old ones.
Right, the understory is pretty good, yeah.
Yeah. But I think that, I don't know if we can recommend that the town replant at least that oak tree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I meant to ask Tom whether there was a street tree planting program.
Because Kim felt strongly that a tree should be replaced. Yes, I'd be-
The town doesn't have a lot of work right now.
Yeah.
There's a whole canopy-
And a nice peach tree-
Yeah, no problem.
At the police station.
Let me know if it's-
Yeah, I just wanted to get, Betsy, you want to add something to say?
Actually, I've run two street tree planting programs in communities that I've worked in, and Winchester, most recently, in the last five or six years, I ran a street tree planting program. And Winchester's done something very simple where they've kind of run an experiment. They used to put in, you know, two-inch trees that were quite large, two and a half, three-inch caliper trees, and it required all kinds of, you know-
Watering.
Backhoes and watering and all this stuff. And one of the people on the street tree committee is an arborist, and he advocated starting and doing really small, like one and a half inch trees. And basically, the Cub Scouts can put them in, you know, they're, they're like a hundred-dollar tree, and Cub Scouts can put them in, the property owners can water them, the DPW will water them, and then over time, they do catch up. So it's a pretty kind of non-invasive way to put in street trees. Doesn't require a lot of equipment. We ran probably about a nine, depending on the trees, a ninety to ninety-five percent success rate in doing it. We did have problems with sweetgums, sweetgum trees.
There are little nasty things to walk on, sweetgums.
Yeah, so anyhow, I mean, that, I can talk with Tom and see if there's the, any wiggle room for putting in a couple of small trees.
And the other thing is that this town has needed this for a long time. We really, it's been, the Hesley, I think, three hundred, to put in a lot of new trees in the town. Green, the Boy Scouts on multiple Eagle projects have planted trees, like a bunch of the Sugar Mayals around school are all Boy Scout Eagle project. And the garden clubs provide money for trees, and they would probably be willing, any of them, to get together and provide money to buy whips, you know, which are two, three, four-year-old transplants, transplant such a, the DPW then grows along and easily transplants out. So, but it's just, no one's ever organized it, no one's ever spearheaded it at the time. It was something that-
I thought it needed to end for it, it was involved in a group that talked about canopy trees and all these-
Yeah, oh, there's been multiple misfires on this, but not being organized, and a lot of it, I think, was around the DPW that they had fully bought on to that.
Well, what happened in Winchester is that there was no, there were a number of trees that were being cut down, but no replacement program, and so former planning board chair, you know, prompted this to happen, and basically got, you know, somebody from Pines Club Planning, you know, got a group of people together, got a small amount of funding for five years, and that's what they started to do. All right, so-
You've done it, Betsy.
Done it, so it's on you.
Just one other question. The bylaw that was passed at the last meeting, you know, town meeting, which had to do with cutting trees and stormwater, related to stormwater-
The stormwater management?
Yeah, I thought that there was a tree aspect of that, that maybe some requirement for notification or something like that.
Well, people were notified of this hearing. So-
Are you thinking of the bylaw that we were proposing that had to do-
We didn't, oh, is it, uh-
Oh, this is a copy of-
Yeah, um, do you have a copy of the current bylaws here?
Uh, just a little bit, yeah.
Which bylaw are you looking for?
I think it was a reorganization that more than interested in change.
It was, it was SEPA or SWPA? SWPA?
Swi- stormwater-
It's within that, that's what you're talking about.
Stormwater infiltrate, I don't remember. It's just, you know, there was some question about it that we weren't sure about, but it did have a, a piece of it that had to do with-
Runoff, that sort of thing.
Runoff and trees and the value of trees helping to control stormwater.
Right.
Um, there's the stormwater regulations. I mean, trees suck, suck up a fair amount of water.
But this was just recently voted, so-
Okay, well-
It may not be voted in everybody's mind yet.
Okay. And this, that's-
No, it's all-
This is old?
It's old.
Oh, okay.
David, it was the replacement of existing language, is that right?
Yeah, but I still, it should, I don't have the most updated regulations for this.
Steve might be there.
It's pretty large.
So it wasn't under the stormwater regulations?
Yes.
I thought it was added to the stormwater regulations.
Okay, well, obviously, and I don't always, do I have that in my schedule? I was handed this until this was updated.
Actually, preserves, maybe, and clusters of trees, I think this is what, why is that?
Because I do special tree.
Oh.
I know.
Do you think that the last draft language online still do? For the special town?
I would-
That looks like just what David was saying.
This is what you're talking about?
The whole of better site design?
Yeah. Gem on guidelines.
I think that this is-
This is not, I don't know if that's-
If you want to go to the next page, you can go to the right.
So what documents are you looking at?
This is page twenty, I think that's what it says, twenty-six of twenty-five? How is that possible?
Yeah, I know. I think maybe that's the last page.
But it does say, it does say, this is the revised piece. It's as if they added a twenty-sixth page to something that was twenty-five pages.
That is the last page, yeah.
It's, it's a guidance piece, it looks like, more than anything, in other words-
Yeah, it doesn't, that's not a guideline.
It just did reduce a lot of notifications.
I, I, as a chairperson, you should probably chastise me for getting off track.
Well, I, I recall this, it was some language that had to do with, I remember what was interesting about it was, in the special town meeting itself, it was like a two-line revision, but it turned out it was so vague that they had to write a much longer piece to explain what it was that they were replacing. But for the life of me, I don't remember exactly what it was.
Okay, bring it back to Steve.
Sorry, I'm lost.
You should move on, you should move on.
Well, any other comments from the board? Leslie?
Yes.
Do you want to say something?
I would if I could. I'm at 242 Marion Street, and I know Marion is a scenic road, and we've been losing trees through storm damage and also through a lot of number of people coming down trees. The definition of what's in the public way, what isn't in the public way, seems to be sort of, shall we say, wiggly at times, and a lot of times, the town has had no ability to stop people from cutting trees down. The damaged tree, obviously, the oak should go, that's dangerous. The white pine, however, is still a young tree, especially if they're going to be cutting down the trees behind them, the idea that you're actually going to get, you're going to have more of a minimum canopy over in that area. Although there's understorey trees now, as you say, I doubt they're going to cut down the big trees and then leave the little ones. It's, the scenic road part of Marion is getting smaller and smaller, and it's too bad, you know, they're part of its natural attrition, but when you actually have one that's clearly on town property and it's healthy, it's a real shame to take it down.
I agree. We are loath to take down trees unless we absolutely have to, but we've seen this situation so often where these tall white pines are exposed. They're, they're in groups and they're very strong and they can withstand wind, they can withstand the elements, but when they're exposed like this, the risk of their coming down is much-
When one is left, is what you're saying.
I'm going to be especially different with the rest of the board on this because we had a big, you know where our driveway is?
Yeah.
And there's a single lone white pine that used to be surrounded by other white pines, and then the driveway went in and they all went down. And I fully expected that that tree was out of there, especially with Sandy, and one of the trees, still in the canopy, went down. That pine survived, it has survived all, everything since. It's managed to somehow adjust and do fine. So I would be, and I'm sorry because I wasn't at the sidewalk, but I know David's kind of leaning in this direction too, and this, you did drive by. It's a healthy white pine. They, I, I'm, it's not universal, it's not given that they all go down. I can tell you, you guys-
Well, Kim made the distinction, though, between those that have a pretty good base. Do you know in your case whether it's got a nice flooded base?
No.
It doesn't have that.
No, it was, it was, and it's growing on rocks, it's growing on ledge, because that's what's up there. And that tree has, and we were terrified watching it, you know, but it stayed and the, and the trees in the canopy went down. So I would be inclined to say-
No, I, I had the same experience with Sandy. I, I had, you know, two oaks and a large pine that were all in the woods that came down, and my lone pine was, is taller than anything around it, over by the septic system, and actually, if we collared around it and rounded, cut it some of the roots twenty years ago, just fine, you know, so I, I would say that if-
It is a total difference.
You know, you know, if these people are worried about branches coming down from the other two pines, then the branches that are at risk should probably, you know, be trimmed. I mean, you have to trim them periodically anyway, because branches die and these trees lose their lower branches anyway and stuff, so.
Yeah, it doesn't have little wrenches, I mean, it goes all the way-
That's what mine is like, it's just bean pulp that's grown out.
But they're usually like-
The, the pine trees that are on the property, they're smaller than this pine, correct?
Well, they're smaller only because they snapped in half.
Yeah, I mean, here the three right there.
Right, they grow past and fell off.
The trunks are a little thicker.
In two of the cases, they had snapped in different places.
And, but this one's still standing?
Yes, no, that's true.
That one is still standing, except for the branch that's about twenty-five feet long that fell off before the one that snapped in half, and then landed on the power lines across the street. So I'm not actually, I mean, I, I fully-
If you just identify yourself-
Sorry. My name is Erin Yater, I'm the owner of 118 Marion. And so I guess, you know, I don't think there's any question that the, it's, you know, the probability is not one hundred percent that any of these trees are going to come down. The split pine, I'm sorry, the split oak, along with having the injury that it has, surrounds the power line, essentially V's around the power line that goes to my house.
What you're worrying about, yeah.
What's that?
I would just go to-
I understand, I'm just commenting-
I'm just saying, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just letting everybody talk, so-
I think everyone's, everyone's comfortable in that one, just there.
Right, there's that. The, the pine that's on my property that snapped in half, that one most recently, that one fell actually earlier, now that I think about the sequence, and then the most recent event was the one where the branch came off the one that's on the corner. And that's the one that fell on the street, that landed on the power lines and went, landed on the power lines with the leaves and the street gunfire. So all of that then led to us thinking about how, what the, you know, what we wanted to do with the trees. Now, I'm personally more than happy to have the town replant. I'd like to have the oak tree replanted, if it's going to be replanted, moved a little further away from the power line that goes to my house, but that's, you know, we can obviously, can, you know, talk about whatever that plan is. But, but I do have concerns on several fronts that will be back here, that there is a reasonable probability that we'll be back here pretty soon to talk about the tree that snapped in half. And I can't guarantee when, but, and it may last forever. You might, you might be right, it may last forever.
Sometimes it could.
But when it, you know, when it snaps in half and it falls on my yard or on my driveway or, you know, wherever, or my, ah, that one's a little further from the house, but-
Well, Sue and David have identified cases where, in other words, these trees have, despite being exposed, been able to stand, to stand up. On the other hand, we have gone on the sidewalk, this is a flexible development, a two-lock flexible development, where the canopy was wiped out except for maybe a dozen trees in between, I don't know if you remember the address on this one, and there were three that had fallen, in other words, in a short period of time after a storm.
I remember this, yeah.
Right. That's my most recent memory of something like this. And the other thing to consider is that Kim, Kim, I think, recommended, given the fact that this tree was going to be exposed, that it come down. I can't speak for her, but that was my recollection of the sidewalk.
Do you know if Kim's coming tonight?
Yeah, I think Kim's experienced, because she and I have done this out before.
So my question to you is, you know, whether, you know, speaking with an arborist, whether those trees pose a risk, the ones that are already somewhat trimmed by nature, you know, if you will.
Generous description.
Right, well, you know, but whether they, at this point, pose a risk to you, you know, in terms of their health, I mean, they may be so far damaged that there's, you know, there's nothing to say, but on the other hand, if they're there supporting this other tree in some way, you know, in that cluster theory, you know, so I guess that, you know, it's okay, part of them fell down, that part's not going to fall down again, obviously, but, you know, does this make, you know, have you gotten that kind of feedback from, you know, someone, from a professional?
I mean, yeah, the folks, the fellow, the Jones who does the landscaping or has done landscaping for us in the past has taken some trees down. When we moved in, it was quite grown, close to the house, and we took a few trees down that were, that were much closer, mostly in the backyard. I mean, his assessment was that, he was the first, in fact, when the tree, the pine that's on our property that snapped in half, it was his first comment that that one definitely needs to come down, but that's got, you know-
Well, I'm in, I'm in white.
But then I'm not sure-
An arborist who, you know, doesn't have an interest in, you know, the wood, the work and all that kind of stuff.
I have not retained an arborist.
I mean, it would be good to get that information, maybe from Kim. You know, what if, or what if these trees stay, and is there a reason they should come out?
One, obviously, has got to come out, but we have one maybe a little judicious already, because during that same storm, Sandy, that left my big pine, that tree that fell up, took out half of another Johnny pine tree. We then had a bucket come in and, and go through and prune that whole thing, and that pine's done very well, but it is, was split at the top, it lost its central leader and it's regained. I mean, I feel badly about all of this because I think the town is under such an onslaught, all the root, street trees are, because of N-Star, because N-Star gets fined if, when there, we have power outages. And so their goal would be to make us look, mm, like Charlestown, something like that.
Well, you saw, you saw it on Church Street.
Yeah, and so, and I know that the replacement street trees would be, when you talk about you wouldn't necessarily like an oak, they wouldn't put an oak there, they would have something much shorter because they don't want any interference with those lines, but I agree with you that it's sort of what's left of Weston.
And it wouldn't give you a canopy if you're not very-
I mean, there are two issues here, one is the tree planting, you know, and having a plan and making sure we replace our older trees accordingly, and the one, obviously, this happens to be a specific that the board is approaching. I'm just trying to point out that we have few good-sized, healthy, not old trees left on Marion Street, and honestly, since the town property seems to be getting skinnier and skinnier by the definition of where the town property is, I don't know how successfully, I'm hoping we can successfully plant trees within that width of strip right of way. Right, because otherwise-
You know, you know, you understand the balancing act, you know, it's a rural place, it's a wooded, you know, we have wooded lots, I live in the woods, you know, I expect trees to fall down, I don't go clean up the woods, you know, although I know people that do. So, but, you know, it's that kind of place, you know, it's not Wellsley or Newton or, you know, or Cambridge. Yeah.
I'm Chaplin, twenty-six something. I had a, I'm beside town land as well, and I had a town tree fall on the structure of mine, and so if you have a concern that a town tree could damage your property anyway, it's very important to put it in writing that you have this concern, because if you don't, then it's actually your responsibility to take care of the tree.
And I'm seeing suspicion, it'll be my responsibility to take care of the tree under oath.
Well, if you put it in, I mean, actually-
So it sounds to me like we're at a bit of an impasse here.
Not completely.
We, we could-
Can I just make one other comment on the, so that everything is considered appropriate? I think it's important for the board to know that, there's, we've talked about three trees. I think it's clear that the split tree, as folks have said, seems to, there seems to be consensus on which is good. The tree that's broken and fully on our property is going to come down. And so the only question, I think, the only important question is, what happens to the tree that's on the town?
Wait, there are, there are three white pine trees, two of which are under property.
Right.
So, and you just mentioned one of them, are you taking both down?
I would expect, I mean, that has been the plan, I would expect to take them both down unless, yeah, that was our, that's our plan.
So, and, and just to be clear, the, the trees that have lost major limbs or leaders, are this one on your property, that's the one that's like-
Yeah, I believe that's the one, sorry.
That's the one that doesn't have the top.
I see, I just, I've always seen the person, where are you taking the photo from? But I think I got it.
I think it's from your driveway.
On the mailbox, yeah.
You mean, take, you mean mailbox?
Yep.
So I think that's the one where the top half is missing.
Yep.
And then this is the town one where you said a, a major limb came down recently.
Yeah, this last fall.
Last fall, okay. And then the other one that's on your property, is that completely intact?
I'm trying to think which one he's thinking of.
Or is it?
The wide one that like-
It's the one closest to your driveway.
I thought the top was off that one.
I think the top is off.
I think the top was off.
There were two of them that had damage, one snapped.
Which may be these two.
There's also one, of course, on the, to the right of where the mailbox is, so-
As an oak tree?
Yeah.
That's a pretty-
Another white pine?
I think it's an oak tree, it's a great tree.
Yeah, and that one, or that one, we wouldn't, that one would-
It's big and huge and even, you, you want, you guys-
So my concern is mostly the, is the branches and the trunk that have come down. I mean, honestly, the, the, the experience, it's not, you know, I don't want to say it's not aesthetic, but in some sense, the ones that's broken, it's aesthetic, but it's not like my goal is to get rid of all the trees that are there, I don't want, I want to make that clear. My goal is not to clear the front so that anyone-
Would you be willing to talk with an arborist about whether those trees are in danger, first of all, and what your options are? It may be a lot cheaper just to do some, you know, very particular professionally, you know, trimming that an arborist can do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to talk with somebody, I don't-
Just, just to check your options.
Should the town, it's a town tree, should the town be hiring the arborist?
Well, the town, the town has Kim for the, for that one.
If she's not-
So she's not an arborist?
She's already said that-
He's a designer, he's a designer.
She's not comfortable talking about that type of aspect. She'd have to defer to an arborist about it.
Well, I was referring particularly to the ones on, on your property.
I'm, I'm happy to talk to them, I just, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't, it's hard for me to predict what the, or what the, how the recommendation would affect or, or how their opinions would affect, I mean, if it's, yeah, I just, it's hard, but I mean-
No, I mean, I don't, I don't know either, I'm not, I'm not in that profession. I just know that, you know, I've heard different things from different people, but, you know, the, the systemic kind of words that I've had in my own experience with trees, you know, comes, you know, from like, you know, an arborist, licensed arborist who, you know, really understands the stuff. That's just my hope that you consider that. I, we have no authority to force that on you, of course.
Can I hear your last name?
Is there an arborist that we can, so town consults with? They can be called in, because it seems unfair to make them pick up, pay for an arborist that-
They wouldn't, yeah, exactly, this is, we're talking about the town property.
Right, so you'd come up with an arborist who would be qualified to go and take a look?
Right, well, and the decision sort of would have to, it seems to me, some of the things are, does it pose a danger once the other two trees are removed? Is that's one of the questions that we have.
Mm-hmm.
And perhaps only he could answer or she could answer, I have to say.
And of course, it's, you know, it's a question of, is it possible to fall down?
Sure, it's possible.
Oh, no, of course.
Is it really possible to fall down?
Yeah, I think we're looking for, obviously, a non-
An honest threat?
Yeah, exactly.
The tree warden basically said that the existing pine within the right of way, he thought was perfectly healthy, but I don't think he looked at the whole ensemble of, you know, impacts if the two middle ones were taken out. He was very clear with me about the oak being removed. So I could ask him to, I'm assuming that the town has an arborist on retainer to help him, maybe that's a big assumption.
It's a big assumption, we don't, we don't have one on retainer.
No?
We should.
No, I don't believe so.
I think you can talk to Tom about that.
But it should be something-
The board is not, is he an arborist, certified on?
No, no, it's a- No, because if.
Or shooting blinds and tree wood.
Definitely choose somebody. It's going to take a whole time, but it should be something that can't be that long to find.
I'll talk with Tom.
Is, is that the consensus then? The idea of getting an opinion, in other words, from an arborist about what risk the lone tree would provide?
I think it gets into the traffic study kind of stuff where we just get in, well, the percentages are, it might be fifty-five to forty-five. I mean, to me, right now, I would just keep it simple and, and not remove this tree. The old ghost, this white pine doesn't go. The trees on their property, they are free to do what they want to do with. And I, I know that it's a risk, that, oh my God, they're not going to be protected. But my empirical evidence is not that they always come down when they are removed from their fellow trees. And this family, it's David's as well. So that would be my feeling. But I wasn't on the sidewalk. I mean, um, I, I go along with what you can say.
But you did see the, the sidewalk.
So there, I left you in a big lurch.
Well, because I, I, so it's a small pole, I don't know, I feel steep, but it, it seems to me, based on the recommendations from Kim, you know, who made the distinction between the trees that are polar that way and the trees that have the fluid, um, I think the risk is greater. Had it been one of those trees, and there are, as I say, there are examples of other trees on the property that have that aspect to them, I'd feel more comfortable leaving it. But in my recent experience, based on the, um, flexible development where three white plants came down for reasons that may be unrelated, it might have been that it was a soggy area and the result was, it's hard to say. But I, I don't remember the circumstances being too much different than this.
See, I'm remembering after the storm, Sandy, all those trees down right off by Coburn Circle on Church Street, which had been there.
It's across the street from us.
Right, exactly that way for years and years and years. They had not been removed. I mean, the things around them, supporting trees had not been removed, but because of the storm itself and the way the winds blew in and the amount of water, like dominoes.
Oh, yeah.
Right, straight down. So I think that it, it's hard to draw conclusions and say, oh my God, lone tree sitting longer than we're down.
Well, I guess I would feel most comfortable, um, having an arborist be the decider because I'm, the tree I really care about is the oak and unfortunately, that's a goner. Um, and it's not that I don't care about the other trees, but I was kind of under the assumption after our sidewalk that it was given that the pine was going to come down because of what Kim said with the, with the base of the trunk and also because the other two are coming down. But if that's not a given, um, rather than just making a decision to keep it.
Do you want to have the arborist then?
I think so, because the, because what if, you know, the other two do come down and then a week later, there's a storm and that tree comes down and that's, you guys were, didn't do your due diligence.
Can we do some sort of motion that reflects five, let's, let's approve getting rid of the oak and request, you know, an arborist to look at the, uh, the white pine, the other situation?
Before we do, is there anything else? Anyone else wants to say?
Can I just add that maybe the motion, A, getting rid of the oak, B, the arborist working with the tree warden, look at the white pine with the understanding that the two trees in the middle on private property are coming down.
Right.
And then if necessary, the pine come down.
So we don't have to meet again?
Right.
Okay.
But, but you're leaving it to the arborist and the DPW director? Or they, they consult with you?
Well, yeah, hang on a second.
It's a question.
Well, I mean, you're thinking about whether or not you will maybe engage an arborist of your own and stuff, you know? Would you, uh, be willing to speak with the town arborist, with the town hydraist, wanting to look at that other tree? To sort of look at the whole ensemble of trees or is that not really where you're going with it?
You know, it's sort of, honestly, it's, it depends a little bit on, uh, process and time, right? I mean, if we're talking about, can I talk to the guy on Monday? Can I talk to him by the end of next week? Sure. If we're talking about, I'm on the schedule for October, then I'm going to move ahead with my private property because it's got to, because there's, you know, mainly because I've got the broken tree down. And once I get the guy in to take the broken tree down, it's sort of inefficient to have him come back and then have him come back a third year. So, you know, there's a, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to entertain more of the process, but it's got costs for me, for us. It's got costs for you guys. This is like, this process is costly. And so, I don't, it's hard for me to, to make it.
Right, obviously, we don't know what the timing is at this exact moment.
Of course not.
But you'd be able to follow that and they'd be able to communicate with you about it. And if it works out, it might be for the better.
I don't, maybe, maybe the thing I can say.
They're not changing it.
No, no, no one, and no one's coming tomorrow. Right, and it's not like the guy's firing up the chainsaw in my driveway as we speak and I'm going to call him when we're done. So I'm happy to have that happen. I just can't promise that at some point, I'm, I've got to move forward with what I got to do.
So that's to raise the point. The question is if an arborist says, uh, do you want to hear what the arborist has to say? Or do you, okay, so we should.
I mean, it wouldn't necessarily, would it have to be a public hearing? Would it have to be a public? I mean, I would just really like to get this straightened out for once and for all.
I think, I think it would have to.
Because, yeah.
It would have to. Public hearing.
Could, could it be a sidewalk? I mean, for instance, if you're going to have the arborist, and I think that's something the town's paying for, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, you know, go take a look at what's going on. It's going to go out there. If the town, if the tree ward is going to be there, anybody from the planning board can be there. You can basically, can't you make the sidewalk a public meeting? And therefore a decision can be made right there?
Do I have to bring cookies?
It all depends what kind of an event.
Do you make you cookies? I'm not saying.
We don't bake them.
I'm just trying to, you know, yeah, right. You're just trying to have more of a public forum.
Well, I'm also, what I'm really trying to do is not, is not, um, if the, if the tree is going, not to discombobulate.
Or vice versa, yeah. Either way, whatever we do to expedite the process is better for the better.
Makes sense.
If we can do that, sure.
Is that possible?
I don't see why not.
Would three of you be able to get out for those?
I will not be able to because we'll be doing it before Labor Day.
Yeah.
There should be.
I mean, I'm going to have to coordinate with Tom, trying to get an arborist and then having, you know?
So this may be.
I'm sure three of us can make it.
I might be able to summarize things.
Well, it seems to me if we can't do the sidewalk together, then it's going to have to be a hearing, agreed?
Right. But we'll try.
Yeah, exactly. That will be the first choice.
Sure.
Yeah.
And is there a notification process for, I mean, just for, for all of the rest of this? In other words, I, I want to know how I know.
How does he know?
Whatever path we're going down with that.
I guess the question, it goes to Betsy. What do you think is the best way, Betsy, to communicate?
Well, just the same way that you would normally communicate for a sidewalk, right?
Um.
I think this is a little different.
I mean, you could continue this meeting. If you continued this meeting, but you're usually supposed to continue to a date certain. So if we don't have a date certain, that's a problem.
So what does that mean? We have to make a motion and vote on something today?
Not necessarily.
No, no, you wouldn't.
We could come up with a date and if that date.
Doesn't work, then you meet and you continue.
Right.
Um, so I don't know how long, I mean, I would hope that within the next week we could get Tom Cullen to, you know, to hire an arborist to, or somehow we could figure out how to get out there and, and look at it.
You know, within the next couple of weeks?
Um, not the week of the 14th of August, except for the week of the 14th.
Because I think Al gets back in.
And Al's back.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Right, you just caught the one.
I thought it was just a week, actually.
So it seems like we'll probably have three.
So you have next week for the week after.
I, I think it's pushing it to assume that, that the DPW can get a arborist by next week.
I agree.
So do we want to try somewhere along the line of week of August fourth?
That's fine. Can I, or really have a, any pull in, in schedules? But if I can push towards the end of that, we can be helpful to me as I'd like to be there. But I will, will certainly not be available until after the fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they're actually best to work on.
Okay, so.
Maybe Thursday, Friday.
Seven or. Often if you're going to pull in an arborist or any, you know, um, consultant, if you tell them there's probably more work down the line, that gets them in quicker and more efficiently. And we do need a consulting arborist.
Uh, the old beaten switch.
Well, the old, both the, you know, it doesn't hurt.
No, but it's not up to us. I mean, Tom is going to.
Tom, but it can be passed on hopefully to Tom.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We don't even know that he has a budget to hire one.
So we, we're going to continue this and let's say that we're going to continue it to.
August.
August seventh sidewalk. It might be the eighth or.
Oh, now wait a minute. The prob-, um, you don't, Kim, we probably would not have Kim in that.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so continue to August seventh?
You should still invite her in case.
Pardon?
You should invite Kim in case she can't make it.
Right, August seventh at eight AM?
Sure.
So we're continuing this meeting. Now, do you want me to convey to the DPW director who is, has stated to me that, I mean, I don't think it will happen immediately, but that the oak tree, which is damaged, that tree is, can come down? Or, um, do you want to wait until the eighth, the seventh?
No, I agree. I don't see any rea-, I mean, I don't see a reason to keep it, you know, married together.
The only complication is that what has it become when it comes to the split?
Yeah, you're right. Well, I don't think he's going to take it down tomorrow, I don't know. So, um, I will just, I'll talk with him.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Communicating for a sidewalk, we already know what it is, so that's great. Everyone, that's August seventh at eight AM.
August seventh, okay.
Yeah.
So the town's taking down a split oak?
No.
I thought that was what I just.
Oh, sorry, split oak, yeah. It's not taking it down yet. I mean, I think we're.
But it's okay to go.
Yes.
But when it happens, it will be the town's dollar, which goes on town.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I just got to hear that, the oak.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say. So the town, they should.
So you don't need.
I was confused.
This is good.